Hello and welcome, this is the third Budget Work Session of the Town of South Kingstown Town Council. The date is Thursday, March 4th, 2010. The time is approximately 6:30. Tonight we'll be discussing budgets account numbers 1005 Human Services to Account 1810. Consignancies include employment benefits, debt service, and the CIP. Two is discussions with budgets accounts numbers 1210 Public Library Services, and three other matters of interest and concern. Now I'll turn the mic over to Mr. Alfred. Steve?
Two items that I've placed on the council's desk at this point. One is a memorandum recommending revisions to the budget adoption schedule for the 2010-2011 year. What we're trying to do is to move the schedule back one week so that instead of having meetings on the 4th and 5th of March, it would go to March 14th.
You mean April?
I'm sorry, April. In the March, what we're looking at is having the council have the budget adoption on the 22nd of March. We had originally looked at the 15th. We would also be looking to move the public hearings on the budget to the 14th and the 15th of April with the final adoption of the budget on the 3rd of May. We're suggesting that those dates be done for two reasons. One is to try to provide as much opportunity before the final budget adoption to get better direction from the state as to how it's dealing with both the supplemental 10 and the proposed 11 budgets as they relate to education aid and they relate to motor vehicles. And secondly, because South Kingstown will be probably, I think, with Westerly, the first two communities going through the submission of budget for certification and the advertisements. For us to do that, we really need to have some direction on the motor vehicle, so we're looking to pick up one more week. So I'd ask the council to take a look at that schedule, then at Monday night's council meeting confirm availability of those dates so that we can get them published. The second item that I've provided to the council is on Human Service Agency funding. It's a sheet that I provide on a yearly basis which provides a summary of all agencies as well as what their bottom line is, funding requests, what they received in current year, what they're proposed to receive in the 2010-2011 year. All agencies have been advised as to the level of funding recommended in the manager's budget. They have also been invited if they wish to come forward and speak to the council this evening. What has been our past practice is to go through the list of the agencies, and if there's somebody present from that agency, we'd ask them to come forward to the table and microphone and be able to make a presentation to the council as to the funding request that they had before. So I'll call the name. If there's no one here from the agency, we'll move to the next agency if that's okay with the council. First agency is South Shore Mental Health. They received $17,750 in the current year. Recommendation is to go to $15,000. Council can review this on page N34 of the budget message and on the expense statement starting on page 18. So it's GF18 for the expense statement and N34 for the human service agencies. No one here from South Shore Hospice of Washington County. They had received $1750 in the current year. We're recommending $1,500 in the 10-11 year. VNS Home Health Services received $29,000 in the existing year. Recommendation's $25,000 in 10-11. Thundermist Health Center received $29,000 in current year. Recommendation $25,000 in the 10-11 year. Phoenix Marathon House, $15,000 current year. Recommendation $12,000 2010-11. Kane Day Care Center, $10,000 in funding in the current year. $9,000 recommended for 10-11. South County Community Action, $30,000 in funding current year. $25,000 recommended for 2010-11. We did not receive a request from Volunteer Center of Rhode Island. Welcome House of South County, $5,000 in the current year and $5,000 recommended for the 10-11 year. Domestic Violence Resource Center, $5,000 in the current year. No reduction, $5,000 in the proposed 2010-2011 year. If you would identify yourself for the record.
Hello, I'm Mary Rhoda, Executive Director of the Domestic Violence Resource Center of South County.
Mary, have you got that on?
Yeah, flip it on.
Good test. There we are.
That's the first test.
That's the first test. So I get more money now, right? Hello, my name is Mary Rhoda. I'm the Executive Director of the Domestic Violence Resource Center of South County. And I just came to say thank you. We appreciate the funding that you've given us. I know it's a particularly hard year for all the social service agencies. As for everybody, we are on a very tight budget. You know, we did have to close our safe home for a short period of time, and we've been able to open that again. So again, I'm here to say thank you. We do, 19 percent of the population we serve are from South County, are from South Kingstown. It has unfortunately increased 2 percent from last year, so the services, it's evident how necessary they are. And again, I just, I mean, I always would like more, as we all would, but I came to say thank you very much for what you offered us and for allowing us to continue the work we do.
We've maintained the recommendation for the funding level. As Mary indicated, the 18.8 percent, 19 percent is from South Kingstown. But again, South Kingstown is a leader in terms of the funds that Mary received in the current year from local governments. 38.5 percent came from South Kingstown. So we are continuing to maintain more than our share as far as the client base that's going through the agency.
And I believe Ella had a question for you, Mary. Ella?
Hi, Mary. I had the privilege of attending, and I think some of the other town council members, the event in remembrance of some of the victims at Christ the King Church last year, and I didn't know if there was a continuance of that program, any planning toward. Have you heard of anyone getting together a similar program?
Those programs are done in conjunction with our outreach and education staff, and at this point in time, they're initiated by the individual churches. So at this point in time, I don't know of any that are planned, but often we have two or three a year, so I'm sure you'll see more.
Very powerful. Jim, did you? I thought you leaned your hand.
Unfortunately, I think from what I heard from you, that business continues to increase, sadly.
We served 600 more individuals last year than the year before.
Yikes.
The economy probably has something to do with that, I would...
The economy exacerbates.
Exacerbates, exactly.
And that's true, I think, for all the social services here.
Well, thank you for the work that you do, Mary. We really do appreciate it.
It's a privilege, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Day one did not receive current year funding, nor did they request funding in the 10-11. They did receive it in prior years. Galilee Mission is the same situation. Education Exchange is next. The Education Exchange was provided with $3,000 in the current year. Recommendation is $2,500 in the 10-11 year. The Exchange receives 52.2 percent of its funding from South Kingstown from local government supports where the client base represents 24.3 percent from South Kingstown. So again, this is another case where hopefully we are continuing to meet what South Kingstown client needs are for the agency, and hopefully in the future, there'll be more rate from other towns.
Thank you. My name is Peggy Benz, and I'm the Executive Director of the Education Exchange, and I appreciate your past year's support, and we were sensitive to the fact that this year in our request, we tried to keep it in line with what we did last year, knowing the need in our community. For us this year, as with all of the other social service agencies, we're seeing a greater need of students coming in and needing some financial aid and support. And our policy has always been anybody walking in our doors, you know, wanting to go for their GED or needing assistance with reading, writing, we will respond to that need and help them as much as we can. We will never, ever turn anyone away, so I appreciate all of your support. Our needs this year will be changing, and we are in the process mid-year of being relocated out of the Sedman Government Center. So I am so thankful and grateful for the support that you have shown to the Education Exchange, and appreciate that. Thank you.
Ella has a question for you. Peggy?
I saw that, Peggy. So do you have a new home, and what were the reasons why you had to evacuate the Government Center?
We've been at the Government Center now. In fact, one of the things about moving, I come across a lot of different papers. The Education Exchange, or the Washington County Adult Learning Center, has resided at the Government Center for the last 32 years. They moved in there in 1978. The reason, again, because of, for the move, is the state is in a financial crisis. So they're bringing in outside agencies who are currently renting from individuals and corporations outside facilities, and bringing everything into state-owned, state-run facilities. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, not a state agency, so we've been asked to leave. We're hopeful, we have identified a space in town in the Peacedale area, and we're very excited about that, and we're waiting to go through the process of zoning and that to get the approval so that we'll be able to move in fairly quickly once the approvals occur.
Peggy, please let us know when you get settled in, and maybe the papers will pick it up, but you called me about the issue at the Government Center, and I just want to make sure you get placed somewhere.
Thank you. We will be celebrating once we get settled, and everybody's invited.
Yes, yes. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Oh, good job.
We are actually, right now, we are in over 3,000 square feet of the Government Center. And we'll be occupying a little bit more than that.
Good. Ella has another question.
I'm sorry, Peg. So all, I mean, I've been up there, and the equipment and the computers, all of that will be transferred? Is that...
All of that will be transferred to our new facility once that happens, yes. We'll have the computer labs for workforce training, as well as the other classrooms available, and plenty of parking.
Okay. Good luck.
She's almost giving it away, but not really giving it away where she's going to be, I think.
You know, through this whole process, one of the things I've learned, until it's signed and dotted...
Very smart of you, yes.
We're not mentioning anything.
Yes, I don't blame you.
Steve has taught us that well, too.
Polly, did you have a question? No? Okay. All right, well, thank you, Peggy.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with everything.
I have been reminded that I missed the Johnny Cake Center. Alan suggested I'm saving the best till last, but...
I thought so.
Johnny Cake was, received $20,000 in the current year, and we're recommending the level funding for the 2010-2011 year.
Hi, Susan Kastatis, Executive Director of the Johnny Cake Center of Peacedale. And like Mary, I came to say thank you for your commitment and support to the work that we're doing. I wish that I could tell you the numbers are going down, but just like everyone else, we're seeing dramatic increases. I provided you with an update of our recent statistics as of February. We're seeing records. Number of folks also coming in to get food stamp or SNAP benefits. Comparison from last year, in the first two months, we only had six people come in, and we've already had 37 just in the past two months that come in to get help. Also, want to say that we are seeing a lot of people that are presenting with problems with housing and with domestic violence, so I just think it was very appropriate that you also helped out Welcome House and Domestic Violence Resource Center. Next Thursday, I want to make sure you're all aware that we have our Fourth Annual Community Conversation on Hunger. The Food Bank will be coming down, and they're going to be presenting the Hunger in America Study. The Johnny Cake Center did participate in that study, so it'd be great if you could join us for that. And we'll also be doing our Fourth Annual Hunger Awareness Day in June at the Village Green, which was awesome last year. And again, just want to thank all of you coming down at Thanksgiving. I can't tell you how much fun the staff, the board had, just having you all there to help to distribute Thanksgiving food baskets to the community, and I hope you'll do that again with us this year.
Absolutely. Whenever you need us to do it. Jim was very good with the frozen turkeys, I have to say.
He was great with turkeys. And I hope you like the photos.
And Polly with her butternut recipes.
Yeah, your squash recipes.
So you do wonderful work there, there's no doubt about it. And it was a real eye-opener, I think, for the whole council to see those people coming in there at Thanksgiving, and, you know, it was a good thing to help out, so. If there's anything else you think that, you know, we need to be at, you know, certainly let us know or where we can help out.
We definitely will.
I think you've got an active council here that would certainly roll up their sleeves and help you again.
Thanks.
No doubt, no doubt. Any questions? Go ahead, Jim.
Just a few, some means tests, who would be charged for clothing?
We determine what it would have, we would have sold it for in our store, our retail thrift store. Most of our clothing are all priced the same, so every shirt in there is $4, and every pair of pants is $6 or whatever. And so each client that requires clothing will get a clothing card. It looks like a little business card. It's got $40 worth of little dollar signs on it, and they go into the store, they're able to pick out the clothes that they need, and then they get the card punched out, what they've spent for that particular shopping trip. So that's how we determine how much money is given out.
That Hunger Awareness, is that at the Kingston Congregational? Is that where that's going to be?
Yes.
On that invite?
Seven o'clock on Thursday.
On Thursday?
Yes.
Right, next week.
This Thursday.
March 11. All right. Any other questions, Sue? No? Well, thank you very much, Sue, for coming in. Thank you for the update, too.
The last agency on the list for funding was Washington County Coalition of Children. They'd received $500 in the current year and are proposed for funding at $400 in the 10-11 year. Are you here for them, Mark?
I am.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Mark.
Hello, everyone. I'm a newbie on the Coalition, but I'm very well-located to come and visit you, so they asked me to come and simply say thank you. We understand we got a little last, we understand why, and we appreciate the $400.
Well, they usually do, yeah. They have some good programs that they put on, too, and the information that they send us is great, too, so. I didn't know you were on board with them, Mark, but you're on everything. You do everything.
No, no, I'm really not. Nope.
Do you have a question for them?
And maybe you can't answer this, Mark. I know that Joe Sweet used to always advocate for the monthly meetings, and I don't know if you attend those, but I can contact somebody else for more information where a lot of the school districts, they used to be held in Westerly, jointly get together for services that may, that children may need. Do you attend those meetings, or...
I do not.
All right, I'll contact somebody else with information about that. Thank you.
Pam Watson will be here, and she'd know the answer to that.
Great.
Running a few minutes late.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mark? No? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see that a few agency representatives have come in, like Mark, late. And...
Would you like to...
So, let's see, on the list, Thundermist, if you'd like to come forward. As I indicated, Thundermist received $29,000 in the current year. Recommendation was $25,000 in the 2010-2011 year.
Thank you. A couple of us are late because of the CDBG hearing at Narragansett. They were waiting for a quorum, which never happened.
Oh.
Anyway, I came just to give you a heartfelt thank you for the continued support and to tell you one story to put a face to it. I think you're all familiar with the Health Center, right? Does anyone need to know about the program? Okay. So we grew this year about 15 percent in both unduplicated patients and encounters. But anyway, the story I want to tell you is about a woman, I'll call Mary, who appeared for our tobacco treatment program, and in the intake process, she seemed very upset, and it came out with a lot of tears that she was middle-aged, recently laid off, and her husband had already been laid off, and the week before had walked out of CVS in tears because she couldn't afford the $500 for her meds. And she was hypertensive, diabetic, and because we have the wraparound services of social work and a prescription program with CVS and another program with lifespan lab, we were able to connect her with a doctor that night, get her some meds, and then connect her with behavioral health to help her deal with the trauma of losing a job at that age, schedule her for a physical, connect her with ongoing meds, and get the labs done so that she was able to get her blood pressure under control, manage her diabetes, deal with the psych issues, and go back to work. And then we do that every day. And then there's our dental department's responsible for a lot of smiles in town that would have missing teeth. So we have 6,500 unduplicated patients, and all of those 2,300 are South Kingstown residents. And I also wanted to be here tonight just to make sure I answered any questions if you haven't.
Any other questions? Polly?
Carrie, do you turn anyone away from Thundermist?
No.
You're able to take all the patients who come?
All regardless of ability to pay.
Did you have a question?
Any resident source, any coming in from Medicaid?
Yes, close to 45 percent are uninsured, so we, our federal funds help cover some of the costs that, you know, that they can't pay themselves with free care, it's sliding scale. About a third are Medicaid, Medicaid, Medicare. And then we have about 30 percent that are commercially insured who choose us because they love the care and the service. Yeah, it helps us balance the budget, and so do you.
And is it also based on something that comes in off the street, kind of sort of trying to help, if they haven't connected yet, that also serves as a paper there? Should we gather them?
Right. And in cases of hardship, we do free care. But it's based on ability, not willingness to pay, so they have to income qualify.
Well, any other questions for Carrie? No? Well, thank you very much, and you do do great work over there, I know. I've been in there many times, and I'm a pharmaceutical rep, so I visit your office, and the one in West Warwick also, so out of my area.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I see that Linda Barden from Welcome House is here, also fresh in from Narragansett.
So...
The agency received $5,000 in appropriation in the current year and is recommended for level funding for the 10-11 year.
Good evening. Stay in here where it's dry. I also apologize, same excuse as Carrie. Never took place, and it's very much problematic. What I've done tonight...
Linda, is that mic close enough for you?
Just pull it, yeah.
I'm sorry. Sounds like it's on. I believe most of you know Welcome House. We provide shelter for homeless families and single individuals in all of Washington County. Last year, there were 56 singles and four families that we took in as emergency shelter, and the families then went into transitional housing. Some of those 56 singles also went into transitional housing. The requirement in order to go into transitional housing is that you have an income and be working towards reintegrating back into the community as a viable part of the community as opposed to somebody who's not doing anything with their life. So when an individual comes in to us, we assess the entire situation, whether it be physical health needs, mental health needs, substance abuse counseling, anger management, you name it. We wrap around those services and refer them out to the appropriate agencies in town. We refer a number of our guests to the Domestic Violence Facility for their classes, to Thundermist, to South Shore Mental Health. Actually, one of the psychiatrists from South Shore Mental Health is the Chair of my board, Dr. Teresa Greer, and a couple of other physicians, a new attorney coming on the board tomorrow, no, next Tuesday night. So we try to identify what the needs are of the clients and build our services around that and build our board around that. We also have two consumers on our board, because as I pointed out to my board, the majority of my board have no idea what it's like to be homeless, and those ancillary things that go along with that. And in order for them to be voting on policies or changing policies, they really need to hear from people who have been through it, including myself. But they hear from me all the time, so they don't listen to me. I've broken down the services, as I said, 56 single individuals providing 5,040 bed nights. Now, a bed night means just that, a night overnight and three meals. Social services. We have a full-time staff of three of us. We do everything in the facility. We have two part-time individuals who work the 4 to 8 shift, and that's the extent of our staff, and it's obviously a 24/7. And this year, with the tremendous help of the Peacedale Congregational Church and volunteers from many other faith communities, we were able to open up an overflow shelter in the event of a weather emergency or hypothermic event, and I'm sure all of you are aware of that. We have not had to use it. Thank you. But it's there, and that just goes to prove the community's support. Because all of those volunteers came together to work and volunteer for that overflow shelter, we were able to get the clergy association meeting again. They have not met in years. I said if your communities can come together for one issue, who is clergy can certainly come together. So they met, and they're going to meet monthly for a couple of months at least, before they start going to once every two months. We have an effect on the community, and I think the majority of it is positive, although we did have somebody burn toast the other day, and I sent a letter of apology to the fire department. I actually told this resident, he cannot ever have toast again. Because if you can't learn to make toast, there's no help. And that's about it. I'd like to continue to say thank you, as I'm sure everybody else has, for the support from the town, both from the town manager, who will see me in the drop of a hat to help me figure out a problem, to the town council, and the planning board and the zoning board, who are extraordinarily supportive in putting together that overflow project. It's nice to be in this community, because not only is the community supportive, but the town and the town management is, too. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Carol?
Linda, how many can you put in the house in one night?
Well, it really, that really depends on the makeup of what's going on in the house. The emergency shelter, that red house on the corner... The emergency shelter, that red house on the corner of North and Kingstown Road, that holds seventeen emergency shelter individuals. That makeup can be, you know, any mixture of men and women. On the third floor are three single rooms where they share a kitchen and bath and living room. And that's for single transitional housing. Transitional housing by federal definition is affordable housing for up to a two-year period of time with case management. Now, they certainly don't have to stay the entire full year, two years. But during that two years, we're applying them for subsidized housing if they're eligible, working with them to gain better employment skills, working on maybe a psych issue that's going on or making sure they stay in recovery because it is a sober environment. There's been quite a controversy lately about this hand sanitizers. I had one at my desk, and I was sitting there, and I just used it. And I'm trying to be really good, Carrie, and I'm doing my hand sanitizer. And the next thing I know, I can feel somebody looking at me, and I stand. And there's two of the staff, and they're standing there and said, do we need to talk to you about drinking in the office? Because it's a clean facility, if anybody even opens a bottle of alcohol, you can smell it all over the facility. So it's been a little difficult trying to keep guests under control because some of them are very sensitive to the odor. We've taken to going outside. We're just, we try to help in every, any way we can. So the, well, and to piggyback on that, I'm sorry to get off the subject. Then we have fifteen apartments. Most of those are for families. If the apartment's vacant and I don't have anybody in the urgent need or we have a family come in as an emergency shelter, we kind of bless the apartment and say, okay, that's emergency shelter for the next thirty days. At the end of thirty days, we bless it, and now it becomes transitional housing. So we've only lost a month's rent. But we got somebody off the street and got them out of a car. We have a dad there right now that we've put in a transitional housing bedroom with his twelve-year-old son. He's a professional. Sudden breakup of the marriage. Son kind of, you know, wanted to stay with dad at age twelve. And so mom got a little ticked off and said, fine, both of you can leave. So we have him. We're seeing more and more professionals and paraprofessionals come in because they've lost a job, a marriage breakup, maybe a substance abuse issue, you name it. But it's no longer the individual who just can't seem to get it right and is going around and around and around and coming back in thirty days later. So.
I think Jim had a question next, and you, Polly?
Okay.
I have to ask a question. Of the fifteen apartments, how many different buildings does that represent?
One, two, three, four, five. With- Yes, all in Peasdale. Some of them are duplexes, some of them are triplexes. We don't have any, we have one building that's up and down, but the others are duplexes, side by side, or triplexes. We own the buildings. Right. And they pay thirty percent of their income regardless of what that income is. We use the same sliding scale of thirty percent that the housing authority uses. We do have three of them right now that are Section Eight. We're hoping eventually to get them all project-based, Section Eight, so that we can survive. Last year, I spent $67,000 in utilities. And that's up from forty-two or forty-three the year before. So the cost is going, becoming incredible. Heating, electric. What they're paying for rent. I have a woman with three children. Her husband is off on a fishing boat because the work has been so sparse, we had to average her income through the year. She's paying $143 a month with utilities included. Nothing. Absolutely. But it's, that one is a set of row houses. There's four of them. And one of the units is a subsidized, is a Section Eight unit. So I get full fair market value for that one. That kind of, last year, I think we probably only lost about $200 total for all four units. That's going to change this year, though. Because one of the gentlemen has no income whatsoever. He's in what's considered a threshold unit, which is for psychiatrically impaired individuals or families. And he has been refused for the third time for SSI disability. And he has a sixteen-year-old daughter with him because mom is out using. What am I going to do? Am I going to make him homeless all over again? It depends on the number of bedrooms. If it's a two-bedroom, I want to say that it's probably around 600 fair market value in South Kingstown. I mean, I could very well be wrong. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I can certainly get those for you if you'd like them. Yes. Yes, absolutely. Because, you know, there's mortgage insurance and maintenance and mowing and yard cleanup and trash removal and broken light bulbs and plumbing and just had to replace a refrigerator and a stove, a stove in one unit and a refrigerator in another. I mean, they can, we certainly get, you know, the best deal we can get, but they still become expensive to replace those things.
Any other questions, Jim? No, Polly?
Yeah, Linda, I wondered, are you able to take care of everyone who comes to your door?
No.
You're not?
Not at all.
You're able to turn people away?
We're refusing right now ten to twelve phone calls a day because we're full. With maybe one or two more a day who are inappropriate, either being sanctioned from the shelter for inappropriate behavior or somebody who is a convicted pedophile, arsonist, or rapist. We will not take those three individuals in. And so we have to find other shelter, other alternatives. We certainly feed them. We had a gentleman in who is a convicted pedophile the other day and said to him, we told you on the phone, we cannot take you in this facility. We can help you find shelter in Providence where security is provided 24/7. We're not funded for that. But you're more than welcome to have lunch in the soup kitchen. And if we can pack up some foods that are non-perishable so that you can take them with you, we will. We'll help in as many ways as we can, but I won't bring them into the facility.
Thank you. And how is your CHANGE program where you have the budget?
CHANGE campaign's going well.
Is it going well?
Yeah, it's slowed down a little bit. Excuse me. But that was one of my weird shower ideas. I just get these creative ideas in the shower. And I have a dry erase marker, and I write on the tile. And I thought of this, and I said, why not this fun little drive-through fundraiser? And I don't believe I've spoken to you since that happened, but the very first call I got after it hit the media was from a gentleman in Swansea who called and asked me if I could give him directions to Welcome House from Swansea. And I said, sure, and I gave him directions. And I said, are you coming in? Are you bringing somebody in? Are you bringing a donation? He said, no. He said, my wife and I have been saving change, he said, for years, and we had no idea why until we saw you on TV this morning. He said, lady, you get it. You're not asking for a $100 donation, a $500 donation. You're asking for change. He said, and people can get that out of the couch cushions or off the floor in their car. He said, but there's one caveat. I said, what's that? And he said, when I get there, you have to have guys there to get the change out of my car because I just paid two teenagers to put it in my car. He came in with two five-gallon Poland Springs bottles full of change. And it was about $1,200 worth of money. And Bank Newport called us the same day and said, we're not soliciting you to open an account or anything else, but we want you to bring the change to us, and we will count it for you free and just give you the cash. Don't bring it to one of these Coin Stars or whatever. So that's what I mean about the community being supportive, you know? And people react to that kind of stuff because we're all in the same boat economically. You know, you might make a little more money than I, but your bills are just as much higher as mine, and it all equals out, so.
Ella?
Linda, are there waiting lists that people can get on? And if so, how far back? Is it a two-year waiting list or is there nothing?
The emergency shelter, there's no waiting list. We take a referral, and we ask people to call us every day. And the first available bed and the first call that comes in gets that bed as the beds become available. In the transitional housing program, it's a little different. By law, the feds tell us we have to show certain things in order to prove homelessness. And if your sister and her husband and three kids are living in a tent in your backyard, that's not considered homeless. There's certain documentation that has to be provided. That's why I said, sometimes if we had a situation like that, we'd put them into a unit, bless it, and say, that's an emergency shelter. And at the end of thirty days, bless it again, now it becomes transitional housing. Now I can be the documenting agency that proved homelessness. So they either have to come from a shelter or there has to be proof of eviction or proof of domestic violence, et cetera. So when we have a unit open, we take people in and we interview them for the transitional housing. And whoever has the most appropriate documentation to prove homelessness are the ones that we will then sort through. They'll be the last ones. And then make a decision who's most likely to succeed at this point. That's the best we can do. It's certainly not the most comfortable process for me because I'd love to be able to take everybody in, but that's not the reality of what we have. I don't feel as though putting people on a waiting list is appropriate because if you're homeless today, don't be calling me in a year's time and tell me you're in the same situation. What have you done to change that situation? So I kind of look at it a little differently.
So for even some of the housing, there is no waiting list? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Basically, yeah.
Okay.
Unless I've accepted somebody in because I know somebody else is moving out in a month or two months.
Do you know if there's any money that comes from the Department of Education, McKinney-Vento money that filters in through the school department to help out? Any students that you may have? Is there any connection there?
I have been told by, and I'm, her name, Kim, I'm not recalling her last name, at the State Department of Education, that there is money that comes into each one of the towns specifically for the needs of homeless children. And so if I had a child in my program and there was a field day and they needed $50 to do that and mom could not afford it, that I could approach the town representative from the state and get that money for them or a backpack or anything like that specifically. That's what I've been told. I've not used it. We've taken the money out of our own budget for whether it be birth certificates or transferring of records or whatever.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carol, did you have one more question?
I just, do you take people from anywhere? Does it matter where they come from? Do they have to be Rhode Islanders or is it ready?
No. Our priority is Washington County. And if they're calling me from Providence and it's between that individual and somebody from, let's say, Childstown or Narragansett, that individual's going to get the preference over somebody coming out of Providence. Not because I'm being prejudiced about Providence. It's just our, I feel as though our first commitment is to cover the needs of Washington County because that's where my funding base comes from. And those are the individuals that I've promised to help, so. But we do take people from out of state. We do take people from Providence. So, you know, my statistics would show that maybe eight percent come from outside of the area. So it's not a lot.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Linda. I don't think there's any other questions up here. Thank you for all your information and updating us. See you in the town for what you do.
Are there any other agency representatives that haven't been here this evening? If not, that concludes the contributions to the private agencies section. As noted, we're looking at $145,400 in total for the twelve agencies that will receive funding with council approval for the 2010, 2011 year. Next item that we go to is on page N39 is the library system. It's on page N39, and on the expenditure detail, it's on page 23. So Shirley's here with us tonight in terms of general introduction. The library program for the 2010, 2011 year requests $940,779. That is down, as all of our other agencies are, by $11,473 in terms of the program costs. Property tax supports for the library, it was $652,590 that went in in the current year. We're looking at $643,780 in the 2010, 2011 year, $8,800 less. The revenues coming to the library this year, we mentioned on Monday evening that we're anticipating reductions in the endowments from the Kingston endowment of about $2,000. And Peasdale endowment will be down about $17,200. Hopefully, with market turnarounds, those endowments will be back up in future years. With that, I turn it over to Shirley to give you some comments as far as the life in libraries.
Good evening.
Hi, Shirley.
The major change to our budget for next fiscal, the major change to our budget next fiscal year is in personnel. If you look at our budget for this, the town council approved budget for this year, and you look at our proposed budget for next year, most of the line items are the same or, you know, basically the same. The changes are in personnel. And we're down in personnel, and it's because we made some, made some changes, obviously. The biggest change was when our branch librarian from Kingston, Pam Mead, retired last September. We didn't replace her as a branch librarian, with a new branch librarian position. I merged the two branch librarian positions, the Hale branch librarian position and the Kingston branch librarian position into one. And we hired then a part-time reference librarian, 25 hours a week, to help work both at Hale and Kingston, so Mary Ann could work both at Hale and Kingston, and to continue with book discussion programs and provide general service to the public. And it's working out pretty well, actually, because Mary Ann is both, in both locations. Jean, our new librarian, is in both locations. And I think it's bringing, bringing the communities closer together. And Mary Ann is working with both Friends groups, and it's working out okay. Our other change is in personnel. We had a youth services librarian at Peasdale retire at the end of last fiscal year. She was an experienced youth services librarian. We replaced her with an entry-level librarian. So that changes, you know, the pay level. We had some changes in library technical assistance and library assistance. Our changes, which affect- Our changes, which affect the longevity, so we have less in longevity going into next year than we had in this year. So it's about eleven thousand dollars in changes coming right from personnel. Other than that, it's business as usual. Are there any questions about the library or what's going on?
Any questions for Shirley?
Shirley, I think when you were here last year, you were talking about closing a day and was it the Peastale Library?
We closed Sunday afternoons at Peastale from November through March this year. And we're getting, yes, so we did close. We are closed. We're continuing that into next year, which also affects the budget. In this fiscal year, in last year, we discussed reducing the hours of two part-time library technical assistants at Hale and adjusting the hours there. That change happened. We're in that change. It'll continue into next year.
So you'll be open Sundays after?
No. Next year is, no new services, no reinstatement of services are planned. It's what we're doing now is what we have planned for next year. We're closed, we're closed right now on Sundays. We'll be closed next year on Sundays.
Yeah, with the Hale Library, are you adjusting to more of a seasonal basis of use? Can you predict that or is it on the uniform already?
No, all locations, including Hale, our busiest time of year is July and August with the summer residence and the summer reading program. So that's Hale really jumps, but also we're affected at the other two locations. Last year, starting last July first, we closed Hale on Friday evenings and they had been open until eight o'clock on Friday evenings in the summertime for a long, long time. We haven't had a problem with that. So that one's worked out.
Are any of the libraries open on Sunday?
In South Kingston, no. North Kingston is our closest, closest library, I think.
There was no way to have at least one of them open on Sunday or that was the defeat?
Well, it was Peastale. We only had Peastale opened. And in this fiscal year, we closed it November through March as a cost-saving measure. And we decided not to go forward with, with the addition of new services or the reinstatement of services because, you know, as our endowment's down and, and who knows what was going to happen with state, the state aid. But fortunately for libraries, the state aid, if it holds, we're in good shape for that, for the state aid.
But people adjusted anyway.
They did. Of course, we've gotten some complaints. So there were some people, and we, you know, some of our, our business is down a little bit and some of it, I think, can be accounted for not having Sunday service, you know? And people, there were some people who just loved Sundays and any cutback, it's difficult.
Polly?
Shirley, do they use the university librarian Sunday?
You know, we have, I think we have, some people do. We have some people who do anyway, but, but most people do not. They don't, they don't go to URI.
Any other questions for Shirley? Nope. Shirley doing a great job over there with our libraries.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you very much.
It's a good staff. It's a very good staff.
Yes. Your library board, we get more applications for that than any of our other boards and commissions.
Isn't that funny?
Oh, it's, it's. Every time there's an opening, it's like, it's.
I think we have short meetings, that's it.
They phoned out, is that what the secret's out? Okay. They want to join you over there.
Right, they can contribute, but not really have to spend their life doing it.
Well, we actually had a few of them apply for other boards, so keep shipping them in because.
I saw, I saw one, at least one, I did notice, had applied for another board after, yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Shirley.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll continue on page forty for the outside agencies. The first agency is the Conservation Commission. They received a thousand dollars that they distribute to a number of different small agencies. We're recommending eight hundred and fifty dollars. Page N forty, Jim? N forty. And if you want to be on the expenditures, it's on page twenty-four. So Concom, we're looking at eight hundred and fifty dollars, down from a thousand. The Partnership for Prevention, we're maintaining a recommendation for level funding of four thousand dollars. That's what they were provided in the current year. We're recommending no change in the, in the ten-eleven year. Now River Preservation, they had requested a thousand dollars. We're recommending funding at a five hundred dollar level. The Chamber of Commerce, who I think may be represented here this evening. They received funding of seven thousand dollars in the current year and we're recommending level funding for the agency for the ten-eleven year. And with that, take it away, Joe.
Good evening. My name is Joe Iacocchi and I'm proud to be working in this great community of South Kingston as your executive director of the South Kingston Chamber of Commerce in providing services and advocacy for the local business community since nineteen thirty-three. The chamber's been a long, proud and well-documented history of service to our community here in South Kingston. It's a pleasure for me to be here this evening as this is my first speaking engagement before this honorable town council and town manager and the supportive staff here that you have here in the community. And it probably won't be my last, but as our chamber becomes more involved in many good initiatives the community faces for our business community and taxpayers of South Kingston. South Kingston has long realized the challenges and benefits of being a seasonal community and with our proud state university that we're proud to say is in our town, the town's faced with managing a steadily increasing number of visitors and summer residents who are coming to South Kingston online and in person. I'm here this evening representing twenty-one hard-working, community-minded board of directors and proud to say a few are in the audience here this evening and the staff of one part-time membership coordinator and myself as the only full-time director. Our chamber is one of the fastest-growing chambers in the state in the last ten years and our six hundred and six members represent the largest chamber in South County. Our members are enjoying many new member-to-member benefits, many new professional initiatives and seminars, business shows, Student Government Day, which we held in this room, a new and improved gift certificate program that enhances the shop-local campaign, more networking opportunities and events, and an increase in the number of volunteers working at our office ranging from eighteen to eighty and reflecting cultural diversity. Our partnership with URI internship program and seniors helping others have been a solid support system since the spring of two thousand and nine. Recognizing the economic conditions here in South Kingston and after lowering our membership to one level affordable membership rate of only a hundred and eighty-five dollars, which is the cheapest in the state of Rhode Island, our chamber has plans in the next few days to announce a Southern Rhode Island Job Fair for two dates, August, I mean, April twenty-eighth and September fourteenth inside the Wakefield Mall. This is a big undertaking for our chamber and we are excited to help the regional economic conditions of our state and especially South County. You never know who's going to walk in the front door or in the back door for that matter as our new chamber site has been recognized as a gateway to Wakefield since September two thousand and seven. We are an official town welcome and information center, welcoming over twenty-five thousand people to South Kingston last year. We have the tourist department handling thousands of requests for information, providing directions, helping visitors find rooms, giving restaurant and contractor referrals, help plan a family weekend for many URI parents, or plan a day at the beach along South County's coastline, and the event information for many community-wide events. We're the nerve center of this town. Our efforts to promote South Kingston as a destination are more extensive and effective and they directly result in revenues bought into this town. We feel we're a one-stop treasure chest for resources for many and we feel that the link needed between community, business and visitors is at its top level. Let me state that we're truly grateful for the town's support and acknowledge the challenges you have as town staff to implement a balanced budget for FY two thousand and ten-eleven. With less state revenues that have fell off significantly, your gross revenues are down and you're working very hard to budget to known, to budget to the known revenues. You all here to take dramatic efforts moving forward to remove the best you can on the pressure to the local taxpayer. We follow closely the hotel tax and the one percent meal tax as indicators of our many efforts in assisting the growth of town revenues. We do not take the funds for granted and we thank you for your support. And we feel that we have a tremendous amount to show for the funds entrusted to us to execute the town's chamber programs. Our programs and events alone more than justify the town and their support to the chamber. It is one of the few town agencies that can actually quantify a return on a town's investment and a significant return at that. When you look at our operating budget, you will see the funds you approved for us in recent years that balance our budget. Our request of twelve thousand dollars included, and I, and I want to, I want to identify why I sent the request in for twelve thousand with our board support. It included one thousand dollars more for operations and four thousand dollars to continue the operation of our town's information center on those important weekends from Memorial Day to Labor Day for four hours a day on a Sunday and a, on a Saturday and a Sunday. Also, our request included a full property tax exemption as of December thirty-first, two thousand and ten, which would assist our FY two thousand and ten chamber budget to cover fixed costs and utilities along with the promotional advertising areas of our budget that have gone up for the past three years. But despite all those increased expenses, we know and feel under these challenging economic times in your perseverance during these sensitive budget processing meetings, that many of your, many of our town meetings and agencies' requests are feeling the time of these economic times here in South Kingston and also in our region. And we're asking you to maintain the town manager proposal for level funding for our operational support. With our boatload of services, the seven thousand dollar allocation in line item thirteen-seventy is one of the best deals any town outside of a few neighboring towns that we know of that could give, that could receive the funding from a municipality like South Kingston. We hope you can keep our property tax exemption request as an open item after the approval of your budget process for us to discuss and evaluate together at another time. The chamber is an essential part of this community. We do an outstanding job for the town and we have a tremendous support base, business owners, volunteers, and most important, the families that enjoy numerous community events. We have to be publicly say that we are very well received by the town manager and his staff from the town clerk, the town planning department, the tax assessor's office, Department Public Works, zoning, and the many issues that we feel we can do a lot more working together for the economic stability of this business community. I'm confident that the town council, after their due diligence, will once again support the staff-level funding recommendation of Mr. Alfred. You have a strong sense of what is right for business and that reaches out to the chamber businesses and promotes the local economy. The chamber continues to fill, fill that essential role. We all hope the elected and appointed officials understand the chamber and the needs of the business community and support us this year and for years to come. Our board of directors and staff lead this network of business advocates dedicated to improving South County's local economy, the business climate, and also the quality of life. Your support to our chamber sends an important signal to the business community. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me this evening and the dedication of our board of directors and also to the joint reception that we receive as a community from this town hall. And I'll be glad to take any questions or comments at this time and thanks for the opportunity to talk for the first time. I hope I wasn't long, Mr. Alfred.
No, no, Joe, you were not. Any questions?
I, I just want to say thanks, Joe, for all of the endeavors that you've done to pull together some great fundraising for the chamber. I don't know if you want to talk about something that are coming up, but I know that since my time on the town council, it's really been, you know, a joy to see all the fundraisers, the golf ball. It's really worked hard.
Thank you, Ella.
Do you want to talk about Dancing with the Stars?
Yeah, it's just been, yeah, we can talk about it and get a commercial maybe out there. It's been a good, eleven months of good dedicated work on behalf of myself and the staff and the board and with the support of the community. We did institute some nice community events, mainly last year that the town council president was a celebrity judge there too. The first ever and it's first ever probably in the state of Rhode Island and also in New England that we know of, the annual golf ball drop that was held in conjunction with the Wakefield Rotary and the, and the University of Rhode Island and along with the balloon festival weekend. And we're looking forward to the second annual this year on July eighteenth. We are, one of my co-chambers is out in the audience. We are going to have on May second, the first ever South Kingston Dancing with the Stars. That's going to be two performances and hopefully you'll all be attending and also listening audience if tickets are on sale at the chamber as of yesterday. And we also will have our golf outing, the first ever golf outing, I should say, on June tenth. One of the chairmans is out in the audience also, on June tenth at the New Meadow Brook Golf Course. And we're proud to say we'll be doing a ribbon cutting with that new golf course and our new member of the Meadow Brook Golf Course on June tenth. So we are doing some great things. The Job Fair is going to be a very important link to the economic conditions here in South County and our state. So we're going to be looking for a nice event there at the Wakefield Mall. So that's some of our busy plates, some of the things we've got on our plate, but we're looking forward to another successful year with the, the allocation that you provided to us.
Any other questions for Joe? Jim?
Thank you for that presentation. Can you break down the six oh six, my notes about South Kingston, between individual members versus corporate types, partnerships?
As far as by category or do you want it by?
Just, well, who don't we have? How many small businesses?
Working with Mr. Nader and the tax assessor, I was provided a business list of the, of the, of the businesses that are associated through the tax rule of the town. There were thirteen hundred and ninety-seven business tax bills that were sent out by this community. Six hundred and six is our number, but you've got to understand out of that thirteen ninety-seven, there, there are businesses that are outside the state, outside, that are doing business here and receiving tax bills. I would say there's probably, we'd like to prospect more, which we're working on as a, as a board of directors and staff to, to look at about two hundred good more prospects that we feel, our goal this year is a hundred new members. Since November, I can share with you, we're proud to say we have twenty-one new members since November first, which is our fiscal year beginning date. Just this past month of February, we received six new members. And just in, today at four o'clock, I just had a new member. So I think we've got some nice momentum going through everyone's teamwork and the breakdown, we'd love to have more members. I think we can handle it. Our facility can handle it. Our website can handle it. And our, and our membership committee, our membership committee is working very hard with the prospect listing and so forth and we're going to see some growth, hopefully more than we have in the last five to six years.
Can you share some of your activities in the other chambers?
Thanks for bringing that up, Mr. O'Neill. Just yesterday, and it was in today's Province Journal, we took a big step with our board of directors, working with the neighboring community of Narragansett to have the first ever collaborative effort. We are having a reciprocal membership as of March first of two thousand and ten and we each received a new member today in addition to the one I just earlier spoke to. But under that program, if a member is a primary member of each, either chamber, they have the reciprocal right to join the other chamber for a hundred dollars. So we're pretty excited about that. And moving forward, we will be doing, working with the two board of director chairmans and vice chairmans, the two executive directors. We will be joining forces at every one of our networking events, which we have three a month, together. We're doing a couple of interesting things regionally with North Kingston, East Greenwich, Narragansett, Charleston and South Kingston. On May thirteenth, we're having a beach party at Knatchit Pavilion. It's a little early in the summer season, but we want to do that together for our membership prior to the summer season kicking off for everybody. And it's going to be good weather that night, by the way, so you're all invited. And we're doing a collaborative with the Providence Chamber of Commerce and South Kingston Chamber of Commerce that I kind of put together at the URI Oceanography Campus on July twenty-ninth with Dr. Ballard. It's going to be a very, very exciting business after hours. And hopefully you can all start putting these dates on your calendars and look at our website and we're doing some, another event on April fifteenth. Quickly, I'll just take a quick minute. Quickly, I'll just take a quick minute. Income Tax Day, April 15th. The Greater Wesley Park, Attuck Chamber, the Charleston Chamber, and the South Kingston Chamber will be having a business after hours at the Shelter Harbor Inn. It's probably the first-ever tri-Chamber meeting, I know it is, in fact, with my history in the Wesley community, that we're headed to a regional event together with what I consider South-South Rhode Island, the great community of Wesley where I reside, but I, we're proud about some of these good things that we're doing for our members and the networking opportunities that it's going to provide.
Lots of dates there. Any other questions for Joe? Nope? Well, Joe, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for the support, and thank you to the town staff. Thank you.
Good night, Joe. Next account is the Peastale Neighborhood Revitalization. They had $2,500. In the current year, recommendation is for an appropriation of $1,000. Friends of Wakefield Village, same as Peastale, $2,500 to $1,000. Washington County Regional Planning, they were at $3,000 in current year, we're recommending $2,500. Washington County Community Development Corporation, the CDC was at $2,000. Recommendation is to go to $1,000 for that agency. I do want to acknowledge the CDC. That agency has done a very good job in South Kingston over the past year. In fact, they have dealt with four affordable housing units. One near the police station, two on Branch, and a fourth in Ocean Ridge. Got the units renovated and back on the market properly, so the CDC, the Washington County CDC is doing the job, and certainly it is, their, their actions have benefited in South Kingston, so the appropriation certainly is, is one that's warranted. Three of those units were held by the Action Community Land Trust that is now defunct. They took over responsibilities and managed those properties. So I did want to acknowledge them, even though we're looking at reductions in the funding level. If there's no questions, we'll move on to page N42. N42 looks at municipal insurance for the year. The proposal is level funding. The level funding would mean that we would have general fund contribution of $210,000, same as it was in the 2009, 2010 year. This account provides for all property liability, excess liability coverages, life insurance, and general deductions on deductibles that the town pays for any claims that come, come forward. It is important to note that we are anticipating about an $88,000 to $9,000 dividend return from the insurance trust whom we place our business with. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the employee benefits accounts 1420 through 1550. First account is account 1420, unemployment compensation. Recommendation is level funding at the $40,000 level. I think the council's aware, as far as unemployment benefits are concerned, the town does not pay into the unemployment compensation pool. We pay dollar-for-dollar for any use of unemployment benefits through the state of Rhode Island. We're anticipating the same level of, of need in 2010 as we saw in 2009, 10. If there's no questions, I'll move on to account 1510, Town FICA, federal insurance. This is social security and Medicare payments. The social security requirement's a 6.2% of salary. All wages paid up to a maximum of $106,800 in income. The Medicare, which is an additional rider on that 6.2, is a 1.45% requirement on salary wage and wages with no income limitation. For the 2010-11 year, total appropriation recommendation is $790,691. This is about $4165 more than what the current year appropriation is. The determination on, on this type of a appropriation request is based on the actual salaries and wages that have been budgeted in the 10-11 year. If there's no questions, we'll move on to the contribution to the retirement system. Contribution in retirement will decrease in the 10-11 year from $745,513 down to $696,895. As shown on page 43 of the narrative, the rates for which the municipal contributions are made for the police employees, this is sworn officers with a 20-year retirement plan, the rate of contribution by the municipal employer is 12.6%. For EMS employees, also 20-year retirement plan, the contribution rate is 3.28%. That is down from 6.08 in the current year. On municipal employees, contribution rate is 6.2% by the, the employer. It's important to note that the police and EMS employees also contribute to the pension system by paying 9% of their wage and salaries into the state retirement system. Municipal employees who have a 25-year retirement plan are paying 7% into that retirement system. The rate of contribution was 6%. It was increased to 7% at the time that the town agreed to provide COLA benefits in retirement for members of the pension system. The narrative also indicates that contrary to the state retirement system, the Muni system itself, MERS, has a 99.73% funding ratio for the town of South Kingston. At this point, South Kingston's assets are listed at $65.5 million in the retirement system. This is the result of the contributions made by the employer, contributions made by the employees, and the investment income yield from the time that that money has been held for retirement purposes, net of all payments for existing pension, pensioners' annuities. The unfunded, the unfunded, or the unfunded liabilities are recorded at $65.7 million, or about $200,000 more than what we have in the bank, if you will, today. That was as of June 30th of 2008. We expect to see the 2009 numbers. Have you got those in here now?
2000? No, those won't be available until November or December. Just a couple of comments. On the Muni plan, it's a 30-year plan, not a 25-year retirement plan. And just one thing as far as what...
Wishful thinking.
All right. Wish it was 20. But just one other thing as far as the municipal plan is concerned, as Steve mentioned, the employees contribute 7%. Over the last 22 years, the average employer contribution has been 2.68%. And since the COLA went into place in 2001, the employer contribute, which is about 11 years, the employer contribution has averaged 3.26%. So it's clear that the employee is contributing more than what the employer contribution
If there's no questions, we'll move on to account 1530, the town health insurance account. On page 43 and then on page 44, page 44 provides the chart, which is also in the budget message, that shows what the copayment requirements are for municipal employees. The contributions will increase no later than January 1st of 2012 for employees hired prior to July 1st of 2002 to 15%. Employees hired subsequent to 2002, the contributions in EMS and police will be, are at 20% now, and will continue during those contracts at 20%. Council 94 and the non-organized, that with a 30-year plan, have, yeah, those that have contracts, we do not have a contract with the NEA at this point. The post-2000 employees are currently contributing 15%. As noted in the narrative, we have changed our insurance placement. We now place through the West Bay Community Health Collaborative. With that, we are self-insured. The town of South Kingston manages both the town and the school accounts. I can't give enough credit to Alan in terms of the number of hours that he's spending with the collaborative, as well as managing both of the accounts. On a monthly basis, he's reviewing all of the insurance, all of the insurance claims, the payments that are made, the administrative expenses. He's worked with the collaborative to go out to bid as far as the reinsurance requirements. There's also been a, a request or proposal for dental, which will also be on a cost-plus basis. So there's a great deal of savings that are occurring based on the administrative work that's, that's being accomplished. For the 2010-2011 year, we're looking for a 2% increase in the premium, is what's being estimated at this time. In addition, the contribution that will be made to the healthcare reserve fund from the, the town's general fund, which will be in the amount of $2,972,173, will also cover the, the annual required contribution for other post-employment benefits. We've talked about this over the past few years. Essentially, we need to pay with the ARC, the amount of money that's necessary to recognize for employees, what the benefit will be in retirement, establish what that cost is, divide it by the number of years that they would work for, and take a portion of that plus investment earnings. The council has approved us establishing a, an OPEB trust. The funds are being contributed to that trust. It's an irrevocable trust. The monies can't be removed. For the 2010-2011 year, healthcare and retirement will cost $796,000 for the town. That $796,000 is inclusive of $526,000 in direct payment for healthcare benefits for retirees that are currently retired, enjoying healthcare benefits, as well as $270,000 in contribution to the OPEB trust, which is to recognize the value of benefits earned by current employees during the existing year. So I think that we've made major strides in terms of getting better control over our healthcare dollars. We have worked well with our organized labor in terms of their recognition of the costs associated with healthcare, as well as the scope of healthcare benefits. So I think that things are moving in the right direction, particularly if we can go with 2%. I would mention, however, that in the school budget, they are looking at a 10% increase in the healthcare premium. The reason for that is that on a cost-plus basis, we're looking at a monthly, on a monthly term, what the actual expenses are. The cost associated with medical, medical costs associated with employees in the school department are running at a much higher rate than they are on the municipal side. So that means that they are going to have to continue to, to increase the level of premium to be able to recover those costs. Wellness programs and other activities are being instituted, both at town, at town level and hopefully at the school level, to try to get better cost containment in each of the different plans. But I think that, you know, over the past few years, the rate of increase has been single-digit, something that probably is not, something that is atypical in the, in this field, both on the public and the private sector. And again, I'd recognize Alan's services on this. Al, do you want to make any comments as far as the healthcare?
Yeah. The only thing that I'd like to add, Steve did talk about the wellness program, and through West Bay, the collaborative that we're part of, what we're doing is putting a grant together to the Rhode Island Foundation. It looks like it has a pretty good chance of being funded. And I think there's six communities at this time that are going to embark on a wellness program, of which South Kingston is one. So there'll be, you know, a health assessment that employees will take. If they take that health assessment test, there'll be a small stipend, $25 or $35 that they'll get for that. And then there'll be a smoking sensation program if, if they stop smoking. There'll be a stipend for that. And there's blood pressure, cholesterol, and diabetes information there that, you know, if people are able to lower their counts, then obviously there'll be some type of stipend that they would receive on that. So it looks like a good program. It's in the infant stages right now. Hopefully, within the next few months, we'll file the grant on that, and then go forward through West Bay as far as funding that. We did have a meeting set up at the Wellness Institute up in Providence, but it was during vacation week, and a lot of people ended up having to cancel, so we weren't able to do that. But we expect to reschedule that in the near future to get the ball rolling on that. So it's just something, I think, where the, the town has, on the town side, introduced the Muni Blue Program, where Blue Cross is out here on a regular basis. They sit down, they have some wellness seminars that they present. They're very well attended by the town staff, and it's done something where you come at your lunchtime, and you sit down, and they go through everything. We had a fair out at the Highway Garage, which was very well attended this past fall. So there seems to be a great deal of interest by the town employees to maintain, you know, a healthy lifestyle. So I think it's something, I'm anxious to see, you know, the, the process and how many people will actually go forward and do it. By having those stipends, which hopefully the grant will fund most of that, there won't be much cost to the town, but we'll receive the benefit.
Thank you, Alan.
If there's no questions, we'll move on to account 1540, the direct police pension. There are two pension, pensions that are provided on a direct basis, pay-as-you-go basis by the town. One is to a retired police officer, and one is to the spouse of a deceased police officer. We provide a 3% simple increase, cost of living on an annual basis. Funding for the two, in total, will be $21,740, an increase of $495 over the current year. Account 1550, workers' compensation. We're anticipating level funding of $150,000 for the general fund component of, of workers' We also are expecting that, that that cost may be a little bit higher, but there's a dividend that's anticipated of about $8,000 to $10,000 that will pay down that cost to a net of the $150. Again, this is dividends that are paid through the Rhode Island International Trust as a means of, that, us being members of that organization, any of the assets that are declared available for dividends are returned to the member owners. Last year, we received approximately, was it $18,000? I think it was around $18,000 in dividends. This year, we're looking at approximately the same dollar amount. It's also important to note that the school department is also a participant in the program, and also is receiving dividend as a means of reducing their cost of service in both the workers' comp and general property liability lines.
How much are they receiving back, Steve?
I'm, I'm not sure what their, what their number is, but it would be appreciable to us, comparable to ours. In fact, probably, probably about the same, because the teacher rates are, are not as... Teacher rates are relatively the same as the administration rates. So I would imagine it's probably in the $15,000 to $18,000 range. Next account is on page N46, which is the education debt service. I think the council's well familiar with the debt program, based on the reviews and adoption of the capital improvement program. We're anticipating education debt service program cost of $3,000,000. We're anticipating education debt service program cost of $3,164,000. When we take out the third-party revenues that'll be used to pay down that debt service, the net cost will be, that's associated with property tax payments, will be $1,982,224. There is no flexibility in those accounts because there's nothing forecast for new debt to be put onto, put into the market. The dollar amounts that you see on page N46 are the actual payment amounts that will be necessary to be made during that fiscal year. So again, the amount is $3,164,000. On page N47, town debt service, same as with the school debt, we're looking at direct municipal debt costs that are down by approximately $110,000 from what we estimate expending in the current year, at $1,223,123. When we net out the third-party expenses, property tax that goes direct forward, that debt will be about $716,219.
Steve, just one comment on that as far as, as the council remembers, you authorized the refunding in November, which, that ended up saving just over $125,000 that the debt service was reduced, both on the town and the school side, in the 10, 11 budget. So that's, you know, that's what, you see the reduction in the debt service and $125,000 of that approximately was the result of doing that refunding in November.
Good job on that, Alan.
Okay, if there's no questions, I'll move on to capital budget. Again, the capital budget was adopted by the council at $1,221,000. It's broken out into four function areas. Recreation with $150,000. Public services in at $696,000. Public safety at $180,000 and general government expenses associated with capital programs at $195,000. It's important to note that there were several reductions that have already been made. Approximately $185,000, I'm sorry, $215,000 was removed from the manager's proposed budget once we saw the shape of the revenue structure for the 2010, 2011 year. The budget is down $185,000 from what the appropriation level was in the 9, 10 year. So capital improvements, like our operating departments, we have attempted to reduce those below current year levels as a means of trying to reduce the impact of property tax levy increase with the diminishing revenues coming from the state as well as a few of the local revenues. If there's no questions, the page N49 is the fund contingency account 1810. We're recommending a reduction of $5,000 from a current year budget of $70,000 down to $65,000. It's important to note that we are underfunding the contingency as we have many of our other accounts. If we, if money was not an object, we would probably want to have between a half and 1% of the operating budget. That would have ranged anywhere from, you know, about $100,000 to $200,000 that should have been or could be put into that fund contingency. We believe we can manage at the $65,000 level. We have certainly demonstrated in the past the ability to adjust budgets midstream as a means of creating additional economies. While that sometimes requires us to reduce service levels, such as the closing of libraries for certain hours, we believe that these are things that have to be done to be able to accommodate the amount of money that's available and the amount of money that taxpayers have, the ability to pay at this time in the economy. That concludes the general fund review, other than the school transfer. The school transfer consideration will be at a joint work session of the council to be held on March 15th. That session will start at seven. I keep having trouble with dates tonight. On March 10th and that will start at seven o'clock. If there's no other questions, I'll turn it back to you, Kathy.
Any other questions for Steve or Alan? No, if not, is there anybody from the general public who has a question? Seeing that there is no rush to the microphone, I think we are over this evening. And the time is about 8:15. Thank you very much.